Good evening. The September 16th, 2024 Legislative Session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silence. We will now open with the invocation led by Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you. If you'd please stand. Please pray in a manner consistent with your faith as I pray in a manner consistent with mine. Father, help us to listen and learn with open hearts and minds as we serve. May we lead by the example Christ set with love, kindness, empathy, and understanding. Please give us the knowledge and understanding to lead in a way that serves you and the people we serve. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
And so be just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement. The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412. Thank you. Before we open our discussions and public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in the audience, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please know individual side conversations in the audience are very disruptive to the proceedings, and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if side discussion is necessary. We will now open our public, our invitation to audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included on the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
We did have one individual signed up in advance. I will call on Beza Yazici. And then we do have five additional seats if there's anyone in the audience willing, who's interested in coming up to speak. Please, when you're called on, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes. Yes, there, if you're here to give testimony before the council.
Oh, am I out?
Did I pronounce your last name right?
No, but that's okay. It's Yazija.
Oh.
Yeah, it's a little different, yeah. But I just, I wrote something down, so I'll just read it off of my phone. But my name is Beza. I'm here to bring to your attention the proposed development on North Route 3 and Rydell Road. There's a proposal right now that wants to build two four-story multifamily home dwellings, and it's right behind where the McDonald's and IHOP is. And on behalf of our neighborhood and community, I'm here to get our concerns heard. Multiple families have reached out to our councilwoman and didn't receive a response, and we're just at a point of frustration right now. We don't really know where to go from here. All we do know is that the developer at our community meeting said that it was going to happen, and it would be age-restricted, 55-plus. We looked at all the documents. It didn't say once that it was age-restricted, and so we're really worried about our traffic, our overcapacity at our schools. I think Crofton High School is already at like 107% capacity. Nantucket Elementary School already has trailers out there. And a four-story building infringes on our neighborhood's privacy, and it's located less than 300 feet away from the neighborhood. And so I'm just here as a representative of my community and people who couldn't make it. I urge you all to take a look at the plans and help your constituents have their voices and concerns heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir? I'll just, Allison, can I say something? You can.
Just want to say, I have been replying to everyone from the community who's reached out, and I do think you spoke to my office as well, so, and I will be keeping posted anybody that reaches out about it.
Councilwomen, councilmen, my name's Eric Young. I live in Annapolis full-time. I'm an experienced real estate developer in multiple states within the United States, and I've developed properties here in Anarundel County, Montgomery County, and Hartford County within the state of Maryland. I'm here representing myself and share common concerns with the two communities on the west side of Church Creek regarding the proposed expansion of Homewood Park, the home, I'm sorry, pardon me, please, the park on Church Creek to include a rowing facility. I was never married, I live on the east side of Church Creek, and I was never given any notice of this proposal. I heard about this proposal by a leaflet in my mailbox, and I understand that the county has certain announcement proposals, and I'm more than 300 feet away, but I do have some concerns. So on the 18th, I'm sorry, on the 13th of August, I sent a letter to the Homewood Park email raising my concerns, and I've asked that the members of your council distribute this to each of you. I'm sorry that my printer printed it backwards. The cover sheet is behind the clear, and the page one is on the front. And I don't know if, when the tally was made of pros and cons for for the park, alterations or against, if that was shared with you, or if you were shared all of the correspondences, but that's why I'm here today, to specifically ask you to take the time to read the correspondence that I sent to the county. I think that I represent more than just myself. I think I represent the members of the two communities on the west side, many of the members in, along Church Creek and Crab Creek, and all the people in the community, in the county, that use this creek for recreational purposes.
Thank you, sir. That was your buzzer for two minutes.
I got it.
Thank you.
You also have some photos to look at that I've referred to.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I'll send a follow-up email.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Sir?
Hello, everyone. My name is Ashley Thompson. I was born in Annapolis, and I've been here my whole life. I am the owner of a company called ART Lawn and Yard Management. We do landscaping and construction. And I came here tonight to just basically give you some more insight on the economics of the landscaping industry. This recent blower ban, which has been retracted, was a huge concern for not only myself, but everyone in the industry. It's very unique because you have four different main sectors, sections, sections. You have your large companies that are usually controlled by hedge funds. You have your next-size company, which are usually owned by guys by me. And then you have your next guys that have very small little companies. And then you have your fourth, which is people who mainly cut grass on the weekends or do landscaping for extra money. The blower ban, which is passed in the city of Annapolis, is going to impact not only my business, but the communities that I, that I provide services for tremendously. I have one community in Annapolis that their yearly contract is going up $14,000 because of the amount of electric batteries that we have to buy. The main issue is, is that where this has been passed in other areas of the country, almost all of them don't have a real fall. And the general problem that we have is that when we do leaves at the end of the season, not only is it the least economical viable thing that we make money off of, now we have to almost, I mean, we'd have to invest 40% more in our equipment just to do something that doesn't pay very well to begin with. We just do it mainly for our customers and whatnot as a total package. And it would, the bigger companies could absorb it, like the ones that run by hedge fund companies like Brightview and that sort of thing, but the guys like us who have contracts where we are having to sign an obligation to commit to finishing something, it's going to be detrimental to, and forget about the little guys and the guys that cut on the weekends. I mean, landscaping has always been a great tool for people who come to this country because there's not a high ROI, and you can really become successful from it.
Thank you. Sir, state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
My home address? My address, or?
Your address.
My name's Kevin Schofield. I'm also here to talk about the blowers. I have a local lawn and landscape company, too. I was going to pretty much say everything Ashley said, but he ran at the time, so I'll hopefully pick it up where he was. He's right, there's like, there's three or four different-sized companies. There's the really big guys that this is going to affect, but they'll be able to afford it. There's the really small guys that honestly are just probably not going to go with it regardless. And then there's most of us that are in the middle, and it's going to be a huge issue for us. For two leaf blowers is in excess of $10,000. When you factor in batteries and chargers, and they have about half the efficiency of the equipment that we currently use, it's just not feasible. It doesn't make any sense for us to do. And the economic impact, I don't think, everything's a priority. I get that, but to start here, to me, just seems a little ridiculous. It's, it's going to affect us. We're just trying to make a living, support our families, and we're trying to do it honestly. It's going to be really hard for us to do that. This is just equipment that we have to buy, and it's 10x the cost now. They don't last as long. I don't know what we're supposed to do with them when they're done. I don't know what we're supposed to do with the stuff that we currently have. We're not going to be able to sell it now because it's going to be illegal to have around here. I just, I don't know how we're supposed to handle this. It kind of comes as a surprise. Annapolis City, they did it. Nobody knew it was even happening. We were just told, hey, starting in December, this is the new law. At least here, we can have the conversation, so that's what we're here to do.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Cole Graziano. I live in Annapolis. I am 19 myself. I am a young fellow. I am here as well as them, representing for these landscaping and construction industry with the blower ban. I just, I feel as if it's really going to affect a lot of us, just like they were saying. There's a lot of big, different companies. Big companies have been in the industry for many, many, many years, longer than I've been alive. They can afford to do something like that. Somebody for me that's younger and starting out and wanting to grow and wanting to build a career into this industry, I just simply can't afford to come out there and supply a whole crew with battery backpack blower and expected to try to do that with a little bit of cash that I already have as myself, with, as well as lack of financing and abilities to get that equipment at a relatively cheaper cost. And the other thing is, too, is that although they say that these blowers put out these emissions, the batteries, when they go bad, I have multiple family members in the fire department, some in the Montgomery County area, and Montgomery County put in a same exact bill for banning gas-powered blowers. That bill passed, it was in effect, and companies had to double what their current bids are for these contracts. I have HOA contracts myself. They would double these bills, and they reversed the bill. These firefighters are trying to put out these batteries. When these batteries go robust and they're done and they're unusable, you cannot put out the fire. So now these batteries are sitting in the landfill, causing more and more damage to the environment than what the actual blower would be putting out itself. So I'm just here as well, representing them, just trying to bring awareness to this and see what we can do.
Thank you so much. Ma'am, state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Yes, Madam Chairman and Council, and especially Lisa Rodvien. I'm Renee Green. I live at 1786 General's Highway in Annapolis. I've been there for 20 years. I'm a financial advisor and a film director. Ashley Thompson has been mowing my yard since 2009. He's also been a financial planning client of mine since then, too. I am glad to hear that you have removed the blower bill that required the commercial lawn services to have these electric blowers. After every mow, his company blows the grass and the leaves from my driveway and sidewalk area. If this bill was to be passed, it would impact myself and others, especially the lawn services and low-income and fixed-income residents. It has cost Ashley's business probably $700 for a blower and then a battery, $1,580, that only lasts one hour. If he's doing 10 lawns in one day, he's going to need 10 of them. That's $15,800. The sound from the, from what he's existingly doing, it doesn't really concern a whole lot of people. This is a ridiculous bill. He might not do the service, so he might not even decide, okay, if this bill passes, I might not even do that service anymore. So what's that going to do? It'll leave me with grass and leaves on my driveway and sidewalk, and I could clean it up myself or hire some individual to do it. Or, most likely, I might not do it at all either, and I'd slip and fall off this grass and these leaves. Now, I have a 91-year-old mother in this, in Heritage Harbor. The same thing could happen to her. So I'm letting you know, if that does, we will sue you, and we will sue the city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This panel is dismissed.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
May I just take a moment to comment? Because a lot of the, actually, I think all of the testimony was addressed towards me today.
You can. There might be, I don't know if there was anyone else.
Oh, I thought that was it. I'll let you close the.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to come forward at this time before we close? Invitation to audience. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. Invitation to audience is now closed. Ms. Rodvien.
Thank you. So I, I just want to let folks know that you have indeed be, had been heard, and that is the reason that I withdrew the bill. The reasons that I brought the bill are still, still stand. This is, you know, obviously, the noise concern is the way the bill is framed, but it's also a major environmental concern. And the state passed a emissions goal bill that goes into effect by 2030. As some of you mentioned, that the city of Annapolis has passed a similar piece of legislation. And I think it's very likely that at some point, this is going to become an issue that, you know, I think we should address at the county level if the state is basically saying we have to meet certain emissions goals by 2030. That's, you know, five years and change away. So going forward, what my plan is first, is first off, there was a lot of confusion about whether or not the county government would be required to follow the legislation, and it is indeed required to follow the legislation if it were, you know, obviously, that bill has been withdrawn. But I thought that that would be a very reasonable place to start, is to start with the county government and the public schools, and let them be, you know, quote, the guinea pigs in our area, although it has been done in many other places. I've also, in, in learning about this, you know, about the, the different types of leaf blowers and how they work, especially for business community, I've worked with a business in Montgomery County who's 100% electric. All of his lawn equipment is electric, and I'd like to bring him in as, you know, a consultant to talk about the equipment that he uses and to talk about how indeed he manages the business. And finally, I think the, the most valuable thing that the county can do, because, you know, we all benefit from the services that you provide, and if, you know, we're also going to be the beneficiaries of the reduced emissions, the reduced noise pollution, the reduced health impacts, then I think it would be appropriate to create a transition fund to help homeowners, but mainly, homeowners also, but really businesses, to, to make the transition and to stretch that over a period of time. So I just wanted to let folks know that that's the, what I'm looking at. This is, I, I really think it's inevitable. The, the climate change data is quite stark. We've had, you know, two tornadoes in my district in the last, I think, four years. We've had most of the record floods in Annap, in District 6 in Anarundel County have been within the last 20. So for us to pretend that, you know, climate change is something we can just continue to ignore is, is not problem-solving. I, I know it's not popular, but I wasn't elected to do things that were popular. I was elected to solve problems, and this is a problem on the horizon that we can't let go. I'm also not in, I'm not, I didn't get elected to run people out of business either, so it is to find the way that we can solve the problems that we know are on the horizon, and at the same time, make sure that our business owners, especially the ones that don't have the hedge fund backing, can survive the transition. And we know it can be done because there are over 200 jurisdictions nationwide that have done this, including many on the east coast with, you know, quite, quite a bit of autumn leaves to deal with. I'll just mention, some have said they've started out for the first year with an exemption for the, you know, the, the heaviest period of leaf blowing for the year, to say, look, we're going to say the first three years of this, we're going, as we transition, will allow the gas-powered leaf blowers during, you know, we could even work with you to figure out exactly what those are, like what, what are the weeks, what are the months that need to be, you know, that, where you really rely most heavily on the gas. And the good news is the technology is improving, the fire safety is improving. Actually, I'm lucky that I'm going on a grant-funded sustainability trip to Sweden, and one of the leaders in electric lawn equipment is a Swedish company, who, I would love to see them open up a shop here in the United States, you know, and, and bring some of their, some of their, the, their projects and innovation here. I would also love to see, you know, our American companies doing the same work, and some of them are. In fact, I have, I have a shed full of electric lawn equipment that's American-made. So I just want to say, I, I hear you, but we also can't ignore the, you know, the issues that are on the table. Climate change is real. If you're a young person, this is a scary thing for what your life is going to look like and what your community is going to look like in 50 years. So thank you very much for your testimony. Please keep in touch. I have, I have met some of you in the past, and I'm glad to see you here tonight, so thank you. And if I haven't met you, stop, this should be a short meeting. Come and by, and I'll give you my business card, and we can talk. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other, is there any item any councilman would like to place on the agenda at this time? Mr. Smith?
Just, just a point of order. I know I didn't communicate with you early in reference to the resolution that we're going to be voting on. Are we able to vote on that today?
Yes, Mr. Smith, because it is a proclamation, it can be introduced and voted on the same evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you.
May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of the September 3rd, 2024 meeting.
The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 7:00 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Rodvien, and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 3rd, 2024? Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. The minutes of the September 3rd, 2024 meeting stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill number 7324, Inordinance Concerning Carrollton Manor Special Community Benefit District. Bill number 7424, Inordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Farm Dual Uses. Bill number 7524, Inordinance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Development Mixed-Use Districts. Bill number 7624, Inordinance Concerning Zoning, Maritime Districts, Neighborhood Marina Zoning District. Bill number 7724, Inordinance Concerning Licenses and Registrations, Towing Companies.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution number 3724, in or, excuse me, resolution honoring the sacrifice and courage of American prisoners of war and those missing in action. Resolution number 3824, Resolution Supporting the Passage and Enrollment of the Maryland Railway Safety Act.
As stated earlier, we will vote on resolution number 37-24 later this evening. Madam Secretary, may I be added as a cosponsor to that resolution?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you.
Madam Secretary, or Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
May I also intervene to be added as a cosponsor?
Thank you, Ms. Rodvien.
Thank you.
May it as well, please.
Making it unanimous.
Noted. We will change the sponsor line by the entire council. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 61-24.
If so, I apologize if there's a typo.
It's a bit of a typo, but that's fine. As long as we do the right bill. Bill number 66-24.
My apologies. Bill number 6624, Inordinance Concerning Approval of the Amended and Restated Lease Between Anarundel County, Maryland and Wiley Bates School, LLC.
This is a county executive bill. Mr. Hunt, when your team is assembled, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Chris Daniels from the Office of Real Estate and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. This bill was discussed at the previous council meeting, and we asked for it to be held for purpose of its, of an amendment, which should be in your packet, and we'll ask for you to pass it at the appropriate time. Just to reiterate, so this Wiley Bates School, LLC, is for, was formerly known as the Wiley H. Bates Senior Housing Partnership. They have a lease with the county. They are doing some renovations to the senior housing there, and their lenders required some language in the lease, which is why they, we are amending it, and it is in the exhibit. It's attached to the bill. We're happy to answer any questions.
Is, is there any discussion from colleagues at this time? Ms. Rodvien.
Thank you. Gosh, it's like a District 6 kind of night. I really just wanted to say thank you for providing the follow-up information about the HVAC renovations, which I apparently was under the impression they had already occurred, but they are coming. So thank you very much for clarifying that. I am not there all the time, and when I am, thankfully, the HVAC has not been an issue, but I know it has been on other occasions. So thank you for the clarification.
Ms. Fiedler, did you have a question?
I was just going to confirm that, or ask to confirm that the packet included, it only includes the lines in the amendment, or the pages in the amendment, or is this the whole, this is not the whole agreement, or is it?
I believe, I'm sorry, Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney, I believe it is the entire.
It is.
Agreement. Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Seeing no other questions, we did hold the public hearing at our, and closed the public hearing at our last meeting, so at this time, I, can we introduce amendment number one?
Yes, we can. Amendment number one, this amendment substitutes the revised amended and restated lease agreement with correction of typographical errors and a change to a certain insurance provision in the amended and restated lease agreement.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's exactly what the revised lease does. It corrects some issues with the insurance provision that the Office of Law discovered. So at this point, we're comfortable with it.
A motion to adopt amendment number one.
Rodvien, so moved.
Second.
Are there any questions about amendment number one? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one has been adopted.
We will bring back bill number 66-24 at our next meeting, which is October 7th. Madam Secretary, please, we're moving on to these resolutions.
Madam Chair? Is there, is there a reason we can't vote on this tonight? Wasn't that considered, that's not considered a technical amendment?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution number 34-24.
Resolution number 3424, Resolution Approving the Nominations for Appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number Five.
Mr. Hunt, this is a county executive resolution. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table is Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. So I'm just going to go over a couple points, and this applies to all three resolutions. So in 2021, the county council passed bill 11-21, which adopted Plan 2040, which is the general development plan for the county. And the county code provides that each GDP adopted by the council shall designate region planning areas and shall provide for the creation of region plans for each planning area. County code further states that the composition of stakeholder advisory committees, which shall include no less than nine and up to 15 members, all of whom shall be residents of, own property in, or have an interest in land use planning in the region planning area nominated by the county executive and approved by resolution of the council. Of those members, two-thirds shall be residents of the region, including one resident from each council district included in the area who's recommended to the county executive by the council member from that council district. If you look to Plan 2040, Volume 1 offers additional direction for interested candidates that shall be vetted through an application process. This section describes the composition of the committees, stating that members may[1776.78] include long-term resident property owners or renters, defined as those who have been there for over 20 years, recent resident property owners or renters who have been there less than 10 years, homeowners association or civic association board members, local business representatives, home builders or real estate developers, individuals with military, Department of Defense, or other relevant government agency or contractor experience, environmental organizations, community and social organizations, affordable housing advocates, members from a commercial or maritime association, real estate brokers, members of a school organization, young adult representatives, members of a local recreation council or group, and farming and agricultural representatives. Furthermore, Volume 2 of Plan 2040 describes the role of the SACs and that they strive to be comprised of a broad cross-section of the region's civic, business, environmental, and other stakeholders who reside in or own or manage a business in the planning area. And the membership of each SAC shall reflect the ethnic and minority diversity of the residents in each region that the committee represents. We're here today for regions five, six, and eight appointments. The application period for these nominees opened on May 1 and closed June 30 of this year. And during that time, the Office of Planning and Zoning received nearly 200 applications, which was more than any prior round of nominees. As part of this process, applicants provided details on their affiliations and personal identifications, and responded and identified their ethnicities, residencies, expertise, interests, and other demographic information. And then after the application period closed, the selection process began and went through July and August, when representatives from the office, from the Community Engagement and Constituent Services Office, Department of Public Works, Office of Equity and Human Rights, Anorundal County Economic Development Corporation, and Office of Planning and Zoning Long Range Planning Section reviewed all the applicant responses and assessed them for the factors I previously mentioned, and then passed them on to the county executive for his nomination. Once the executives identified selections, members of the council, whose districts overlapped in those regions, were then also provided the opportunity to make selections. I want to emphasize that choosing nominees this time around was exceptionally difficult because of the number of qualified applicants. The process is a multi-dimensional puzzle. The Office of the County Executive, the staff, and respective council members, I know, all had difficulty determining which applicants to select over others when considering their geographical representation, demographics, and affiliations. We've received far more qualified applicants than there were available seats for these committees, and even after selecting the maximum number of members, 15 for each committee, many qualified applicants unfortunately did not receive a nomination. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. I got some information from the auditor that she had gone back and forth with the Office of Law about whether or not these resolutions, specifically 34 and 35, were in compliance, because apparently there are two districts that did not have recommendations. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure. So, the issue was, we did not, my understanding is, there were not any applicants that met that qualification of being a resident in the district, the Councilmanic District, for that particular region. So, while the code says that each council member shall nominate or recommend someone in that situation, we did not have any such applicants, and therefore had to move forward to populate the committee without those resident members.
May I follow up?
You may.
Thank you. So, then, on that, I guess what I want to understand is, you're saying that there are people who were added to the recommended list, that there were no recommendations from council?
No. What happened was, there was no one that applied that met the criteria of being a resident of the Councilmanic District area that is in that region.
So, which, which district in the region is the problem? In, let's just say, 34?
Mr. Volkey?
Oh, sorry.
One of them is mine.
You know this. You know about this.
Yeah. So, it happened at the, at the last, the sliver of District 2 that was in Region 4 actually doesn't have any dwelling units for anybody to reside in. And so, when the council set up the SACs, we made, we did this to ourselves, I had to select someone who not only lived within the region, but the slice of the region that is in my district, making it very selective when regions touch multiple districts.
I got you.
So, I don't have a Council District 2, and I'm not even sure which region it is.
Five.
For Region 5, as I didn't have for Region 4.
Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Just checking. So, then, I have another question. This is related but similar. So, when this inquiry was made to the Office of Law, the response that came back apparently added people to the response from the administration. Can you clarify why the Office of Law would loop in administration officials when the auditor is asking a question to Office of Law?
Well, the Office of Law has no knowledge on how this, the process itself.
Okay.
So, therefore, we needed the factual information to determine how these selections were made, what they were based on, that sort of thing. I mean, the auditor wasn't asking for legal advice. The auditor was asking through a legislative review for the Office of Law's opinion. So, there was no reason that it would be.
So, that's not perceived.
Attorney-client.
Okay, got it. So, you didn't perceive that request as a request for legal advice?
Correct.
Okay. So, if the auditor asks a question about a piece of legislation and is not saying, is this legal or illegal, then the Office of Law perceives that as a legislative request that has no confidentiality and no privilege associated with it? I'm just trying to understand where the line is.
So, the line is, if the auditor is asking for specific legal advice for the auditor, or the auditor's office, a matter that they are, specific to them, then that would be legal advice. But on these legislative reviews, they're actually asking for us to comment on the legislation itself, which is not a legal, it's not legal advice in that respect of assisting with an issue within the auditor's office.
Even though you're our lawyer, too?
Yes. I mean, if you could ask me for legal advice.
No, I know.
Yeah, and you do.
Right.
So, that would be legal advice that would be confidential.
I guess where I don't follow is, the auditor is a creature of the legislative branch, to the extent that the auditor's office lives in a branch. So, as a result, if the auditor, as a part of the legislative branch, makes a request to the Office of Law for information, and that relates to legislation, I don't see how that would be different than a council member making that request. That's where I'm struggling with it, because like, the auditor's office, I've said this to the auditor, and I'm saying it to you, they don't exist outside of all the other branches. That's not how it's set up. Like, the auditor is technically a legislative function. That's how the framers of the charter intended it. So, if the auditor is asking for legal advice, that's the same as if a council member was asking for it. So, I don't see how there's no attorney-client privilege when the auditor asks.
The auditor was asking about a piece of the administration's legislation.
Mm-hmm.
And how the county, how it happened, how it occurred, the facts behind it, and then asking, you know, is there an issue with this legislation? Is it legally sufficient? I did not interpret that as actual legal advice in the sense of, you know, confidential legal advice.
Okay. I guess I just find it troublesome, because it's like, if the auditor is asking, and the auditor is seeking advice, even if it's legislatively related, it's, or asking, yeah, that's compliance with, is the, are we complying with code or not? Like, that seems to be like a legal advice question, that they are asking you all, and then you all are turning around and saying, well, we're going to loop in the administration and have them here, which then seems to violate privilege.
I mean, I can certainly look at that issue. I did not interpret it in that fashion.
Okay. I definitely see it that way. I don't know about the rest of my colleagues. I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I find that to be very troublesome, that the auditor, as part of us, is coming to the Office of Law and then is seeing the administration looped in. I have, I'm concerned about that.
Ms. Raviyan?
Thank you. Yeah, I actually want to echo my colleagues' concerns, because I feel like if the auditor is asking, you know, I mean, they're coming to you because you're the attorneys, asking your opinion about the sufficiency of the legislation. To me, that's like the very essence of asking for legal advice. So, I feel like maybe we need to tighten up the policy to just say, hey, is this, I mean, to just, to just go double-check. I mean, if she, if our auditor had gone to someone other than the Office of Law and asked, well, what do you think? Is this legally sufficient? First off, that would be weird, because she would be, like, she would want to ask that question to an attorney, which is, I'm sure why, or at least I imagine why. I can't say sure. I can't say definitively, because we haven't spoken about that, but that that's why the auditor would go to the Office of Law is to get the legal perspective on it. So, maybe, you know, putting a policy in place where there's just a check to say, are you okay if we loop in the administration? And the answer can be fairly, I think, can be no, because there are reasons why the auditor might not want to, you know, bring that questioning, line of questioning to the attention. So, I just agree with my colleague, Mr. Volkey.
Ms. Raviyan?
Ms. Fiedler, my apologies.
I just want to, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to briefly concur. I think, for me, it creates a slippery slope. What is considered not under attorney-client privilege because it's the auditor, well, that's no different than a council member asking a question on legislation. So, just want to agree with my colleagues, and hopefully we can revisit this, either officially or unofficially.
Let me just say, the original thing that I commented on was the auditor's review of legislation. And I did that not in response to anything other than the auditor's, because I saw in there this question about this membership. I'd have to go back and look at the email chain, but I think different people got added to this email chain along the line. I don't think I was the only one who included people that were not necessarily in the legislative branch. So, I'll go back and look at that. But that letter from the legislative review letter goes out to a wide variety of people outside of the legislative branch, so.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Volkey?
I'll be quick. I don't think we're trying to point the finger directly at you, just to be clear. So, that's not the intent with anybody. I think Ms. Raviyan's suggestion, in my opinion, is the best suggestion. If the auditor reaches out, I think the Office of Law, in best practice, should say, is this a request for legal advice? Do you consider the request that's coming in, you person asking, as a request for legal advice? And if the answer is yes, then I think at that point attorney-client privilege attaches, and nobody else should be added. I think if the auditor came back and said, no, you can talk to any department you want, I just need to get this information for legislative review, that's different. But I think that's a step that if the Office of Law puts in, that's going to solve this problem. Because, to me, it's concerning if the auditor is coming to law and then feels like they're asking for legal advice. Law sees it differently. How's the auditor going to know how law sees it?
Thank you. Everybody good? We're going to open the public hearing on resolution number 34-24. Madam Secretary, did we have anybody sign giving online testimony about resolution 34-24?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received one piece of testimony that was shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
I believe we have one person signed up in advance this evening. If there's anyone else in the audience, you may come up at this time, but my, the one person signed up is Dr. Linda Bonner. State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Linda Hanafin Bonner, Quiet Water Cove, Annapolis, Maryland. And thank you for the opportunity to present these comments, because I'm sure this is probably a bit unusual for someone to not only present testimony about the resolution for the Stakeholder Advisory Committees, but also to raise some questions. And first of all, I do want to appreciate the staff work that goes into the work of the process of trying to find people to be part of these committees. But Region 4 gave us an example of what happened when there wasn't adequate representation on the committees, on the committee. And what we've seen in 34 and 35, and I'll only take the time to speak on this bill, there's an imbalance that's occurring between the real estate development and military people and not representing the community interests. If there's over 200 applications for three committees and you have to select 45 people, it seems to me that you could deep, dig deeper to get those folks representing their community interests, particularly in the Crofton and the Gambrels area, which is a significantly developed area, and we know there's going to be a lot of questions about redevelopment. People need to be informed about how zoning changes affect their properties, and they need to have the representatives of the community that they, that they participate and live in. And I'm not sure that this has really been accomplished, particularly for 34 and for 35, for Region 5 and Region 6. Are we opposing this? No, we're not opposing this, but we're raising some questions about the process, particularly around representation. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further movement in the audience, the public hearing on resolution 34-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution 34-24.
Resolution number 3424, Resolution Approving the Nominations for Appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number 5.
Is there any further discussion on resolution 34-24? Ms. Hummer?
Yes, I just want to address something, that we did have a number, a number of very well-qualified applicants for Region 5, and it was a challenge to pick everyone. There may seem to be an over-representation of military people, but having read through them all, and especially the ones that were appointed, the region is heavily military, active, and retired, and a number of the people who maybe have listed as military are retired military people who have chosen to remain in the area and are involved in other aspects as well. So, they bring a military perspective, but also the other. So, it's not solely based on their military background that they were chosen for these. I know, when I looked at it, I was looking to make sure that we had people from communities representing all of our different demographics, from renters to longtime homeowners, so that we get the perspective of everyone. So, it is a hard balance to do, but I, I see a number of very, very highly qualified people and who are very engaged and want to be a part of this, and I'm looking forward to the meetings for Region 5.
Seeing no other comments? Oh, oh, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Hunt, question for the administration?
Yes.
These groups of SACs will operate in a similar fashion to all other previous SACs, which will include an opportunity for public feedback.
Absolutely.
Okay, Madam Chair, may I make a call up statement?
You may, you may.
Ms. Bonner, I just want to say, in looking back at Region 4, I think one of the bigger improvements that can be made moving forward is spreading the word within the community, so that those voices that you feel are not represented on the SAC come out to the SAC and have their voices heard there, and then at the PAB, and then when it gets to the councils. So, that's, that is my wish for these regions. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution number 34-24.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 3424 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution number 35-24.
Resolution number 3524, Resolution Approving the Nominations for Appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number 6.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I won't reiterate my comments again, but happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion from my colleagues at this time? We'll now open the public hearing on resolution number 35-24. Madam Secretary, did we have anyone reach out ahead of time?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Dr. Bonner, I have you listed again. Did you want to come forth and restate? You're, no, you're good, okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward at this time to make a statement on resolution number 35-24? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on resolution 35-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution number 35-24.
Resolution number 3524, Resolution Approving the Nominations for Appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number 6.
Any further discussion? Ms. Fiedler?
I just wanted to correct, I said Ms. Bonner, Dr. Bonner, I apologize.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution number 35-24. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 35-24.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Resolution Number 35-24 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 36-24.
Resolution Number 36-24, Resolution Approving the Nominations for Appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number Eight. Sorry about that.
Mr. Hunt.
I echo my previous remarks and answer any questions.
Is there any discussion? We'll now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 36-24. Madam Secretary, did we have anyone provide any online testimony?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
I don't have anyone signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak at this time on Resolution Number Seeing none, the public hearing on Resolution 36-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 36-24.
Resolution Number 36-24, Resolution Approving the Nominations for Appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number Eight.
I don't see any discussion, but I believe there are two amendments. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this amendment replaces an appointee on the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Area Planning Number, excuse me, Region Planning Area Number Eight.
Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This adds Melissa Stanton to the SAC for Region Plan Area Number Eight. The previous nominee, unfortunately, is moving to Virginia, so can no longer serve.
May I have a motion to adopt Amendment Number One?
So moved.
Chair, second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? I know Ms. Stanton, right?
Yes. I just wanted to make full disclosure, she is my campaign treasurer. I don't know that that conflicts me from.
Well, it's always better to say.
Yeah, I'm just, full disclosure. She's what, she's not getting paid for this. Still an affiliation, just like, to be honest.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number One to Resolution 36-24 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two, this amendment removes home builder, real estate developer as a qualification for appointee Emily Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This just clarifies, Ms. Wilson is not actually a home builder, real estate developer. I believe she checked real estate experience when she was filling out the application. She actually, I believe, handles real estate transactions for the state.
Oh, I see.
Yep.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt Amendment Number Two?
Motion to adopt.
Madam Secretary, is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number Two to Resolution 36-24 has been adopted.
As a reminder, resolutions may be amended and voted on on the same night. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 36-24.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Resolution Number 36-24 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 37-24.
Resolution Number 37-24, Resolution Honoring the Sacrifice and Courage of American Prisoners of War and Those Missing in Action.
I believe at this point, all seven council members are sponsors, but I believe the lead sponsors are Ms., Mr. Smith and Ms. Ledbetter, yes? Mr. Smith.
Thank you all for signing on as sponsors for the team effort. The great thing about Anne Arundel County is, we have a couple things that identify us, Fort Meade, the Naval Academy, so we have a rich tradition in military service. And there is a trend nationwide that is trying to pay respect for a lot of those service members who never returned back home from war, including Vietnam and other wars of the past. And so, for us to have a rich DNA history in military, it's only appropriate that we support those efforts that pay homage to those who, in some cases, sacrificed their all. And we may never know what happened to a lot of the families or service members who did disappear and never came home, but I want those families to know that this county has stood up on this day and said, you know what? We will never forget. We'll always remember your loved one, and until they come home, we're going to have that porch light on, letting them know that you're always welcome back here, we're always going to be there supporting you, we're always going to be there looking after you, and we're always going to be praying for you. And so, just grateful for the council members to share that same vision and to know that our service members and those who protect this country, we hold you in high regard, and we know that whatever your needs are, we're going to be there to support you, because you have given us the freedoms that we hold dear in this country, and certainly in this county. So, thank you all.
Is there anyone else wanting to speak on Resolution 37-24? No?
I believe Mr. Smith would like me to read the full resolution into the record.
If this is possible.
Of course, of course.
Resolution Honoring the Sacrifice and Courage of American Prisoners of War and Those Missing in Action, whereas September 20th, 2024 marks the 46th National Prisoners of War and Missing in Action POW/MIA Recognition Day. And whereas, of the more than 81,000 brave service members remain missing and unaccounted for and will never be forgotten, including 70 World War I, World War II, Korean War, and Vietnam War service members from Anne Arundel County. And whereas, the county council honors the remarkable bravery, sacrifice, and commitment of service members and their families for our freedom and future. And whereas, the county council calls on residents of Anne Arundel County to reflect on the sacrifices of heroes who endured unimaginable conditions as prisoners of war and to remember those who never returned home, leaving families still seeking answers. And whereas, the county will proudly fly the POW/MIA flag, black and white flag, outside of county buildings as a daily reminder of the sacrifices made by our service members and their families to protect our freedom and way of life, and will continue until all POWs and MIAs are accounted for. And whereas, this year, the Legacy of Honor Project requested every county in Maryland to prominently display a missing man table on September 20th, 2024, National POW/MIA Recognition Day. Now therefore, be it resolved by the county council of Anne Arundel County, Maryland, expresses its gratitude and reverence to the families of those missing in action and service members who were held as prisoners of war, and reminds them that you are not forgotten. And be it further resolved, that the county council will display the missing man table outside of the council chambers on September 20th, 2024, to provide an opportunity for everyone to pause and reflect on the great sacrifices our service members make to protect our freedom and future.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just lastly for Anna and Lee, I know, if, I don't know if we're, oh, right there. I just wanted to give gratitude to them, because they set up the missing man table out front. If, for those who are in the audience, if you haven't seen it, please stop by. They did a wonderful job of displaying that table, because I did check it for, you know, validation, to make sure it was all appropriate, and it was. So, thank you all for your efforts in putting that up. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Resolution 37-24? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 37-24.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Resolution Number 37-24 has been adopted.
At this time, is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the county council?